Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 10, 2010 Planning Commission Meeting. But the record show all members are present. Next on the adoption of the minutes from January 13, 2010. Motion by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Bob Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Public comment period. Anybody in the audience wishing to come forward and talk on any item not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to comment. Ricky, you want to make a quick summary or brief announcement on the master plan?
Yep, just wanted to invite everybody out. Next Wednesday, Ash Wednesday, the day after Mardi Gras, we will be having our master plan support committee meeting in this chamber at 6 o'clock, and we'll be discussing the comments that we received after the last public hearing and what the master plan draft, how it's being changed to reflect those comments. And we're nearing the end of that portion where we are able to start making changes to the overall package because we're going to start, I guess, compiling the overall document here shortly. So, we're inviting people to come out and listen and, once again, solicit response.
Thank you, Ricky. And I also encourage everybody to come out. We're winding this thing up and not too many opportunities to comment and review the master plan. Okay, item number 5A, public hearing for considering the following family partition, Jerome Babin property, lots JB4 and tract 5A1A.
James Fauger representing the Babin family on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, and corrected on the plat, asking the commission for approval.
Any questions, comments by commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I was looking at the servitude of passage on this plat, and it's hard to read the dimensions, so I'd assume it meets the staff recommendations.
It's 40 foot. Yeah, I agree. The map was really small.
Yes.
Hard to read.
We had a bigger map and everything on there.
I see James has a big one, too.
Yeah. Everything on there is compliant with the code.
Jeff, including your number eight?
Number eight.
Staff comments, number eight?
That deals with the servitude on the, I was talking about the servitude they're creating, but the existing servitude that's on the, I guess that's the southern portion of the property, does need, right now, it had an existing 20-foot building line, and on the property itself needs to be extended to 25 feet. So, just with the new code that we put into place, it needs to be 25 foot for that front setback now.
Wait, I'm sorry. I didn't hear your last sentence.
Oh, with the new rules we just put into place in our code, that needs to be 25 feet now instead of 20 feet.
Okay, and it has not been addressed yet?
It hasn't.
Okay.
I just got that. We'll change. I talked to him earlier about that. It'll be changed on that lot.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Okay, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment? No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any additional comments, questions by commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to reflecting the 25-foot setback as noted in the staff report.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Dumas, seconded by Commissioner Dalton. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 5B, the Brady Mobiel property, lots 3A, 4A, and 4B.
Representing Mr. Mobiel on the following family partition, comments were made, addressed, and asking the commission for approval.
Here again, it's hard to read this map.
Yeah. It's originally a version of 24 by 36-inch plats, so when we reduce it to 11 by 17, as of recommendations are, it kind of, on some of these plats, it does get hard to read. We're basically just taking two lots and dividing them up into three and adding a 30-foot section of the property to taking it out of over 2,000-acre tract.
But they own that other tract, too, obviously.
Which one?
The one that you're taking, the little...
No, that's Limone Tibbo tract. That's the 30-foot is coming out of the 2,000-acre tract in the back.
That somebody else owned.
Yeah, and they'll be signing the plot.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Want to make sure.
Well, is it 2,000 acres or 1,227 acres?
It's 1,200, but then they own additional tracts. They actually own about 5,000 or 6,000 acres in that area. But of the one tract, it's 12 acres.
So effectively, you're doing, how do I say? So effectively, you're subdividing that 1,200-acre tract as well?
Basically. When we surveyed the property, originally subdividing the property, the, I guess, the line actually went through the house, and they didn't know it. The house has been there for 20 years. And upon our surveying, we realized the line went through the house. So they had to, it's been going back and forth through their attorneys, and these attorneys trying to get it, and they agreed to only sell them 30 feet to the property to get it free and clear.
Those tanks that are on that site?
They're just storage, like for feed, stuff like that.
They do have things in them?
Like this feed.
Oh, okay.
No oil, gas, or anything like that. It's not those type of tanks.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any other further questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm going to have to oppose. I don't think we should be dividing up conservation lots this small.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Barre, seconded by Commissioner Wells, and Sherri opposes.
Well, yeah, I don't have a problem with what he's doing, but I'm going to oppose to the motion simply because I don't think the application meets, it's complete. We're subdividing a 1,200-acre parcel land, and the complete legal description for that parcel is not here. So I think it, to me, it's a matter of either the application, again, if this application were correct, I don't know that I have an issue with it, but I don't think this application is complete.
Okay.
And I don't know if staff wants to comment on that or not.
Well, I mean, kind of, or both.
Okay.
Well, you're setting a bad precedent.
Huh?
You really are setting a bad precedent. Because, you know, 1,200 acres and in conservation, minimums of one acre.
One acre, right.
Now, it's been that way, and we, unless one slipped by me, I don't ever remember this commission granting less than an acre, even in a family partition, in conservation.
Like I said, I...
So I'm going to have to oppose it as well.
At one time, the zoning line went actually through Lot 3, up until the rezoning of this property, then it's changed. So at one time, Lot 3 was rural and conservation.
Okay. Any other opposition?
I oppose.
I oppose.
How about Mr. Dalton?
I'll have to go with opposing because of the lot size and the conservation area.
Yeah. Beverly and Buddy are four.
Yeah, okay. All right. And motion does not carry. Motion?
Then we need a new motion.
Right.
Then I'll submit a motion to deny because it does not meet the conservation requirements.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to deny.
Can I make a substitute motion? I'd like to make a substitute motion.
First and the second here, so, I mean, he can make a substitute.
I would ask the author to consider amending the motion.
I mean, oh.
I don't know how you want to amend it.
I just think that I would rather give the applicant the opportunity to go back with staff, maybe address these issues, and correct the application, have a complete application.
We already have a procedure in place. We don't need a motion to deny. The motion to, no, the motion to approve failed.
Failed, right.
Okay, their request is denied. Now, they have the, they can go through an appeals process where they go back, they get with staff, and they submit an appeals application to come back and get the commission to review it. They can make the changes. You don't have to do that. We already have an appeals process in place.
I don't agree. I think you do have to, if a motion is made and denied, then I think we have to end with a positive motion.
I think you're right, Commissioner. That's fine. We have to end in an affirmative act, whether it's approval or deny. If a motion's made and it fails, there is no affirmative action that took place.
I disagree with that. If the motion was approved and we denied it, that ends the action. There's no need to have a...
Counsel?
An affirmative vote to deny.
I don't have the rules in front of me, so I don't know how to directly answer that right now. I can research it and let you know what the right answer is, and I don't want to answer and give you the wrong answer right now.
I think Mr. Compton wants to...
The way that we've interpreted it is, what they're saying is, if there was a motion to approve, there was a second, but that motion failed due to denial, everyone voted against it, then there needs to be another motion to deny, and then a revote to see that that motion passes. You need the motion to pass for it to count.
That's my understanding also.
And that's why, I think you're correct. Let's just go forward with it.
I've got one question. If her motion fails, does that mean they've been approved?
No.
That's denied.
No.
The subdivision...
You keep going till you get an agreed-upon motion.
Well, it's not going to hurt anything to do it that way tonight, but I'd like to have staff report at our next meeting as to what the real procedure should be.
You know, Howard, that's one thing that we are working on is parliamentary procedure, and we've been trying to have a meeting and get some of these things worked out. It is confusing sometimes.
Let me know if I can help.
Okay, thank you.
Did you copy the book?
I'll read it.
Let's go back. Sherri, you made the motion to deny.
I do not want to amend my motion. If you want to, did you put out a substitute motion?
Well, either, okay, if you don't want to do it, then my substitute motion is to say, is we defer the matter and give the applicant opportunity to go and complete this application.
That's already placed. I mean, that's already, they've got their right to appeal already. You don't need a motion for them. They already have the right to appeal our decision.
My motion to deny, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Okay.
All right, so, substitute...
So if he doesn't get a second, we go back to deny.
That's right, that's what I'm...
That's correct.
That's what I'm understanding, too.
Okay.
All right, substitute motion fails for lack of second. Back to the motion to deny. Sherri Sloman, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Okay, motion to deny, passes. And Ms. Falterman will get back to this next time. Thank you. Okay, item number six, committee reports. Subdivision committee, Ms. Sloman.
In your packet, you should have some information on an ordinance, some ordinance changes. The staff has prepared for us. These have been, we've been working on these for some time. And what I would like to have tonight from all of you, I mean, you've had a week to look at it. I know that's not enough time. But what I would like is to move forward next month. So what I need is a motion for a public hearing next month, and I'll make the motion to bring this for public hearing next month.
Second.
Okay. And we are continuing to work on this and some other changes. And then our next meeting is 9:00 a.m. on the 26th at DPW.
Okay, we have a motion by Sherri, seconded by Commissioner Dumas, for public hearing on these revisions to the subdivision ordinance. Any opposition? Okay, motion carries, and next meeting on the 26th at 9:00 a.m. Okay, thank you. Item number seven, old business, Germany Land Development, tracks B1 and B2 revision.
I'm Ross Berthelot. I'm a managing member of Germany Land Development, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Basically, we're looking for a plat revision for a mistake that we made, which carried forward a fence and landscape servitude that was originally intended for some residential lots along Germany Road, was accidentally carried forward all the way through the commercial tract. So now we have a landscape and fence servitude private on the commercial tract that we're trying to revise.
Okay. Any questions, comments by commissioners?
The Dollar Store is on tract B1, right?
Correct.
So you have another lot between them and the road, Germany Road?
Correct. Originally, in the, and I have David Patterson, my surveyor, with me if you'll have any specific questions for, he drafted both plats. But the original plat for East Creek Villas created track B, and it's, if you look at it, it's sort of ambiguous as to whether or not the private landscape servitude continues on to track B. It definitely shows it along the residential lots on Germany Road. And so we didn't bother with it. And as a matter of fact, the Residential Lots Homeowners Association maintains the private landscape servitude, which right now goes across the commercial tract. So they are technically supposed to maintain that as well, the way it currently is shown. So what happened was when we subdivided last year to tracks B1 and B2, I was paying more attention to the family dollar tract. And we have a beautiful, probably the nicest family dollar you've ever seen. We forced them to do some things that they don't normally do. It's not a metal building. On track B1, well, track B2 got shown with the landscape and fence servitude on it as well. So now we're here to try to correct, really would like to correct both plats so that my homeowners association on the residential side doesn't have to maintain the commercial tract servitude.
No other questions, comments? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments What is the wish of the commission?
I think it's just a housekeeping issue. I think this makes sense, so I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Sloman for approval, seconded by Commissioner Dumas. Objection by Commissioner Marshawn. Any other objections? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seven, B Gateway Industrial Park, second filing, parts 1, 2, and 3. Mr. Sanji, good evening.
Good evening. Michael Sanji with CSRS. You may recall, a few months ago, we came before the commission to extend the preliminary plat for Gateway subdivision. The item was deferred for 60 days. We came tonight, or had prepared a timeline to express our reasoning, I guess, for coming for the extension when we did. Since then, the staff has apparently researched the ordinance, and I guess there's some question as to whether or not we fall within this respective filing portion of the ordinance, which would give us a five-year approval period from the original plat date. So I think the staff recommendation was simply to defer to the commission for an opinion or ruling on this, and obviously, we would be in agreement with the five years, so.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments by commissioners?
I have a question for legal. What about this? Do we need to act on it? If he's got five years, he's got five years.
Right. I looked at this ordinances earlier today, and it is very ambiguous, and I do think you have to give him the five years. You can't create a different law today. I mean, all you can do is follow what's in the code already.
Well, if it's five years in the code, I'm at a loss of what you're trying to tell me. If it's ambiguous...
What I'm trying to say is, yes, I mean, the code is ambiguous, and nothing is specific, and it vaguely does give him five years. The one that they, 17405H1 and 2, when you read them both together, he does have five years. But he does have to come back before the commission. Hold on, give me a second. I left out it earlier today. I'm not used to that book yet. He does have five years, and I think he came three months ago to give us the update that was required, so now I think we just have five years.
My question, I guess, is if he has five years, I'm at a loss why it's in front of us.
I think because when it was in front of you the last time, I don't know if you all asked for him to come back or not.
We did, we did, but we didn't have this information at that time, and based on this, you know, he's got five years.
Right. He's just here to tell us hi tonight, I guess.
We missed him.
When we originally inquired with the staff, we were given a different, I guess, portion of the ordinance that talked about a shorter period, and we actually had to be under construction. Well, that's what got us so alarmed, is we need time to design and go through all that process. But had we been given this, we would have never come back and ask for an extension.
Well, and I think that was kind of because of the ambiguous terms. When we initially gave him the two years, which is the subdivision requirement for a single, I mean, no additional filing kind of thing, then that's what we originally gave him as the deadline. But then, when we started looking into it, when we started getting with the committee and getting all that together, we came up with that he does actually have the five years. And so at this point, since we've already told, and we've already been in the wranglings, I think more or less for his safety, he just wants to make sure there's something in stone at that point that he does have the five years.
Let me add this. I still don't think we need to act on it. This is a public record, and it's recorded. He has been told by our legal that he has five years, and I don't see where we need to do anything else. If this gets disputed down the road, he can come back to the public record of this meeting, and he'll have his five years.
We're fine with that. I was just commenting that the staff recommendation was to defer.
I understand that.
But I'm fully in agreement if your legal counsel's saying we have five years, and we're okay. We don't need any action.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, the matter's on the agenda, and I think, just to close the agenda, and I think we need to, I think I'll make a motion that, based on legal and staff recommendation, the matter should be removed from the agenda, as the applicant has five years and no longer needs the extension.
Okay, we had a motion by Julio for removing the item on the list, and seconded by Bob. Any opposition? Motion carries. 7C, Ascension Marketplace, site plan revision.
Lee Pickard, representing Ascension Marketplace.
And Mr. Pickard, if you have a lot more to add from last time, you know, share it with us. Otherwise, we just, we don't need to go back through the...
Just asking for your approval.
Questions, comments?
I had questioned staff on one thing today, and once I saw the packet and the plans, it's, I think it's much better than what I thought, what I had imagined. So, but I was asking them about connecting to, on the north side of your property, and because the gas station in the McDonald's is already there, we can't ask you to connect to them. But staff did say we could ask you to provide a stubout in case of further development there. So I would like to throw that out to everyone, and you look like you're questioning. Does that make sense to you?
Well, not exactly, because the, when we first approached DOTD, the possibility of adjusting to connect to the light. And we also met with the adjacent landowner, the guy that owns the McDonald's on the run. The problem they have is, is that their fuel tanks are right there. There's no way, in other words, if there's a stub out there, it's going to run into their fueling stuff. They didn't want any adjacent crossover there. The other problem is, is that there's a national fuel retailer going in next to them, and they don't want that guy, their competitor, to have access to the red light.
I think this is for, I understand what you're saying, but I think this, to plan for the future, what if that gas station goes out of business and their tanks are removed? Someone else may want that access, that stubout. So just my thoughts. You want to say something?
Just north and south.
North and south, correct.
Where, adjacent commercial property?
Just providing, just stubouts going both ways for, again, is to keep traffic off of 73 if possible, so people don't have to get onto 73 and then get back off. You know, if they want to go to the gas station, they would be able to stay off of 73. And it's just planning for future development, future growth.
Well, trust me when I tell you that, you know, we would love nothing more than to be able to have the ability to access that red light.
Right.
So, I mean, the driveway, the road on the plat goes from our main drive behind the national retailer and then behind the retail center. So the only thing that's going to be in the way is the curb that separates the Chevron station from our property. Now, I don't know what other provisions, you know, might need to be made for that. I mean, certainly not a T-turnaround there, or something of that nature.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. It would appear to me that that servitude of access that runs behind the properties that face 73, it looks like it goes to your northern boundary and your southern boundary.
It does.
Wouldn't that meet any connection requirements down the road if the people of the adjacent properties wanted to make a connection?
I tell you what, Commissioner Dalton, I would agree with you if this gas station was connected to that roadway as well. But right now, you know, they're focusing, I mean, I think we need to interconnect all of this as much as possible to alleviate the traffic off of Highway 73. Every one of those points of ingress and egress are going to create traffic movements that are going to further exacerbate the problem on Highway 73.
Well, I agree with you, Commissioner Dumas, as far as the interconnect, but we can't force McDonald's to connect.
No, but McDonald's may not always be there. It may not always be there.
McDonald's may jump at the opportunity.
By running that servitude of passage to the northern boundary and the southern boundary. So, I mean, I think it's kind of a moot point.
Our driveway runs all the way to the boundary line on both the... Our driveway runs all the way to the boundary line on both the north and south boundaries of the property. We, I don't understand exactly what the commission is asking. Are you saying that you don't want to approve it unless it's connected to the McDonald's?
No, that's not what I said.
I'm missing something then, I guess. I mean, if the driveway goes all the way to the property line, to the north and to the south, behind the lots that front 73, what in addition to that are you asking us to do?
Something might clarify it. Sherri, what Mr. Pickard is saying is that there is a north and south right-of-way, this unnamed, that probably ought to have a name, too, shouldn't it, sir?
It's a private drive. I mean, it's not a public street, so consequently, it's not going to have a name unless it's dedicated. Now, if y'all are asking us to dedicate that.
No, 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 no. I'm not asking to do that. But I notice on the front, the very front corner, I guess it's a northwest lot, you're showing entrances to that piece of property, but not lot three and four. It looks like it's got a curb all the way around it. You know, how do you get in and out of that piece of property?
Lots three and four?
Right.
They're accessed by the two drives. I mean, lot three would be accessed by the main drive, Marketplace Avenue, that will be a dedicated street. There's also cross-access between lots three and four behind them.
Okay.
And then there's a private road or private drive on the southernmost portion of the property that would actually be able to access lot three as well.
Okay, well, the reason, I was kind of curious, because you showed all the entrances to that lot one and two, and then none on the rest of it. I didn't know what your plans were. I mean, you obviously have to get in there, but are you planning to put an entrance to the lot three and four opposite the entrance going into lot one and two?
Yes.
Okay, it's not shown on here, so that's kind of.
Let me ask you a question. Are you, do you have a name for the north-south road that's behind the gas station? Are you naming that one? Do you have a name?
No.
Is that a driveway?
It's a driveway.
It's part of a parking lot? Is it inside? I mean, does the gas station and this other vacant lot, do they have the rights of ingress and egress over it?
The gas station where the McDonald's is, is that what you're asking?
Or whatever it is that you're proposing here on this slide. I mean, do these people, how do I say this? The parcels of land that are to the west of the north-south driveway.
About lots six and lot five?
I'm sorry, no.
North of lot one and two.
Lot one and two and three and four, do they have the rights of ingress and egress over that north-south driveway?
To the rear of them.
To the rear of them.
Or to the east of them, actually.
Yes.
They do?
Yes, it's a servitude of access that is, as, cross-access to the adjacent lots.
Yeah, no, this should be going all the way through, and that should be, too.
I don't know about this, but there and there, yes. See this, I think, yeah.
So you need to be able to get either here or here.
Here, I want.
Okay.
Actually, Ricky, he has.
Committee going on here. Yes. All right, we're going to, let's go ahead and call for public hearing while we talk about this a little bit more. This time, I want to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please come forward to do so. No one wishing to comment. Ricky, did y'all come to any resolution down there? No?
Mr. Pickard, do you own lots five and six also?
Yes.
Are you going to develop those lots as well?
Yes, sir.
So, in other words, your private servitude that's running north and south is eventually going to access or be part of the access for lots five and six, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then, he's going to be coming back to us. Is it going to be right now? No, I don't see it being right, next year, two years, three years, whenever. He's coming back to us. You're going to have a better idea of what's going on in that area two or three years from now, but he's going to come back to see us. So I'm going to offer a motion to approve contingent upon staff comments being addressed.
I'll second.
All right, have a motion to approve by Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Wells. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight.
Motion.
Have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned, and as soon as I see a slide come up, we'll convene the zoning commission meeting. There we are. This time, I'd like to open up the zoning commission meeting of February 10th, 2010. Let the record show, all members are present. As soon as I find my agenda. Okay, we have item number three, election of the 2010 chairman. Do I have any nominations for the chairman?
I nominate Alan Cross.
Okay, I have a nomination for Alan Cross for chairman, seconded by Julio Dumas, seconded by Sherri Sloman. Have a motion to close the nominations. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Wells. And thank you for your support in the upcoming year. I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you once again in the transition, I know, on the master plan. Item number four, election of vice chairman.
I nominate Commissioner Sherri Sloman.
I second it.
Motion by Commissioner Dumas for Sherri Sloman for vice chairman, seconded by Commissioner Bari. Have a motion to close the nominations by Commissioner Nance, seconded by Commissioner Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Congratulations, Sherri. Item number five, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come forward, comment on any item? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment, public hearing is closed. Item number six, acceptance of the minutes of the December 9th.
It actually had a modified minutes that.
Amended?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion to approve the amended minutes.
Still.
Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. And we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Nance. We are adjourned. Congratulations to the Saints.